Yes.
They're playing against us, red flag, your white was covered.
Yeah.
Start.
All rise. Door open, cameras down, submission, Barbara Clark. Thank you, everybody, having an invitation. Amen.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Gordon.
Daniel Boswell. Roger Carr.
Here.
Jesse Bowlin. Jerome Walker. Philip Calley.
Here.
Lee Richard. Patrick.
Here.
Bobby Melton.
Here.
Adam Hall. Cindy Robbins. Craig Divins.
Here. In dress. Yeah. Survivor. Especially these. Paul St. Jerome Walker. Paul Ford. Other. Here. Uh, number six. Two hundred thousand dollars. No match. About fifty-five minutes. On equipment with someone that'll be able to assist you. And I'm. Three. But.
Then we'll put Wi-Fi in there and have the other.
Um.
Independence Monroe, uh, Joey Evans, the historical, uh, Heritage Museum, uh, the library here, uh, for in the basement. Uh, I came up with ten, uh, but we're gonna look at eight, cause two of them already has existing Wi-Fi weeks and it's just expand them. Um, up in Hanging Lamb, up at, uh, the old community center up there around the park. Uh, also, we're looking at adding computers to the library over a couple at the Heritage Museum to be able to look up, uh, some stuff. We might be able to download some, um, historical, uh, things on those computers and they can use those. Downstairs in archives, we're gonna put a, a few there. Over at the senior center, we're also adding Wi-Fi there, putting six computers over there for the senior citizens. Uh, but down in, uh, in the archives, uh, Pam is going to start a class, a genealogy class, cause a lot of people in the county wanna do things, but they don't know how to get started or anything like that. Uh, so we're, we're getting a few tablets for down, uh, in there as well, so she can teach this genealogy class on how to start looking up your ancestry and stuff like that. Also, a few tablets over at the library.
Good. Any other questions?
Uh, yes, Fairgrounds Wi-Fi with that.
On the community center, uh, with the extension, I, I'm sure they've got it now through the program there, you're just gonna extend it over to Joey Evans.
To Joey Evans will extend it out, uh, so it'll go out without the GM out to the department.
Do you have a question, bro?
Is there anything in the Richmond area?
Uh, I, we don't have a community center or anything county-owned down there, so we didn't, I didn't, we can always add to later. But right now, I just had to identify some spots.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion with Dr. Savage. Got a second by Robbie Melton. Uh, clerk Al Rowe, please.
Craig Divins.
Yes.
Donovan Clark.
Yes.
Gil McAlwin.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Calley.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Daniel Boswell.
Yes.
All four. Most care. Uh, I should explain while we're down, we had it at the courthouse, uh, last week, we got some, uh, some smoke come out of there and I think we had some damage to one of the pumps, it quit working or something and, and there wasn't any heating cooling on the second floor, so, uh, Stephen worked it out, we could come down here, I, I work in a courtroom, so that's, if anybody's wondering why we're here, it's due to some, uh, some, some problems at the courthouse. Uh, number seven, consider approval for two library grants, so, is one is the Association of Rural Small Hiberians, which is gonna be, uh, five thousand, fifteen thousand dollars, no match. And then the Penguin Random House Grant for a thousand, no match, and it's been approved by the budget committee and also been approved by the library committee too, so. So, I mean, got a motion by Cindy Robbins, got a second by, uh, Dr. Savage, any questions? Uh, Al Rowe, please.
Daniel Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Philip Calley.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Gil McAlwin.
Yes.
Oliver Clark.
Yes.
Craig Divins.
Yes.
First thing, all four, most care. Uh, number eight, share approval for school budget amendments, general fund school, general purpose school fund one forty-one, amendment number three, and then federal project school fund one forty-two, amendment number three, approved by the budget committee. Basically, it's just that time of year where they're shifting their, their funds around, when they need it in the area to be. Uh, if you all have any questions, would you maybe anything else? Not real, uh, uh, most, uh, Philip Calley. Got a second by Randall. Uh, there's no other questions, you have any questions, give them, Al Rowe, please.
Craig Divins.
Yes.
Donovan Clark.
Yes.
Gil McAlwin.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Calley.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Daniel Boswell.
Yes.
All right, I think all four, most care. Number nine, uh, consider approval for award bids for the sheriff's car, or sheriff's vehicles to Carville, uh, the only bidder, and the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred each, uh, times seven will be two hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. That's been approved by the budget committee. Also, there's a hundred ninety thousand already in the sheriff's budget, uh, for, uh, that they're gonna use from the SRO, uh, grant from the governor's grant, so, looks like they've got half the money already, he buying SUVs, is that correct? Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding vehicles?
Is that a hundred ninety total or a hundred ninety in the budget and a hundred ninety?
Well, it's in the budget, twenty-nine thousand, it's got in there. And then the cost is gonna be two ninety-seven.
I'll make one.
Got a motion by Craig Divins.
I'll take it.
Second by Donna Savage. Victoria, Al Rowe, please.
Daniel Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Hang on, I still don't understand this. So, there's a hundred ninety already in there, honey, right? Plus, there's another hundred ninety, so there's three hundred.
Hundred, hundred and seven.
You got the money.
It's in this budget.
There's a hundred ninety thousand there, there's two hundred ninety-seven thousand what the cost, so it'd just be a hundred and seven thousand out of, we'll have to give them, right?
No.
No.
It's there. It reads a hundred ninety is in the budget, plus a hundred and ninety is in the SRO funding.
So, it's, it's like.
Three hundred and something thousand dollars.
One of your, one of your budget amendments has many, one hundred ninety thousand out of the SRO fund that the governor gave us to four vehicles. And then when we originally prepared our budget, we put in a hundred ninety thousand for vehicles in the sheriff's.
So, all the monies are, you get all the monies that.
Okay.
Victoria, Al Rowe, please.
Daniel Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Philip Calley.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Gil McAlwin.
Yes.
Donovan Clark.
Yes.
Craig Divins.
Yes.
Most, the same four, most care. Number ten. Number ten, uh, consider approval toward, uh, bid for a digital sign at UT Ag Building, uh, we see two bids, uh, Quinn Sign Company was twenty-three thousand seven hundred four, Martin Signs nineteen thousand two oh two, uh, Budget Committee has awarded the bids of Martin Signs, funded, provided by UT six, UTTSU, Glen Lakes Graham, and County, and now, that's gonna be over here at the community center, is that right?
Yeah, on the other side of here.
Does anybody have any questions for, uh, the ag agent back there, setting back every one? We've been working on this for how long, that's six, six months, probably?
More than.
So, trying to get.
It's been a year, yeah.
Been a while, so, I'm glad we're getting there, it's gonna be nice down there. Got a motion by Jeff Long.
Robbie, you have a second?
Pardon?
Robbie, you have a second?
Okay, Robbie. Robbie Melton, seconded, and no other questions, we call Calrope, please, Charlie.
Greg Dibbitt.
Yes.
Donovan Clark.
Yes.
Gil McCallum.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
All four, motion carries. Number eleven, twelve, thirteen, we'll pass, although those are governed by the board, the nursing home, uh, we, uh, that's, uh, money that they generate, it's underneath the umbrella of the county, but it's actually in the business itself, and it works for the board, so, we'll pass eleven, twelve, thirteen, and move to fourteen, uh, now, and this is to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three, twelve, eleven, dash zero one, for the District Committee, now, the prior one, we're gonna have to rescind, because there's an error in the document, so, what, what I'll need is a motion to rescind and adopt the new resolution. If you have any questions, Lily Ann's here with her county attorney, and she'll elaborate, if you have anything further about the District Committee. Go ahead, Phil.
Let me explain, on our cover of the sixteenth, this county commission passed the resolution that appointed the judicial commissioners for county here, uh, it was based on meetings between Mr. Evans, uh, Judge Coase, and myself, and the, uh, and Donald's daughter.
Brittany.
Uh, who supervises judicial commissioners, so, that was prepared and was sent down to the clerk's office, and somehow, no, there was some kind, kind of confusion about the old one and a new draft, and, uh, as you all know, we have new staff in the county executives' office, and somehow or another, it got confused between those two offices, and the old one got passed by the commission, so, we need to rescind that old one and, and just, uh, substitute the correct one, which is in your packet today, number fourteen is the correct one, they have different numbers, but we just substituted, we're sending the old one that was passed the sixteenth, and we're substituting the new one, which is in your packet today. So, does anybody have one motion?
A motion, we need a motion and a second.
And we need two thirds, go.
Motion to rescind the first resolution.
Motion to rescind.
The first resolution, and then adopt the current resolution, all in one motion, I think Greg made that motion.
Okay, motion to rescind and adopt.
The current resolution. Do you second that? Make that point, Greg?
I'll say.
Okay, Robbie, Melton, second, okay.
Greg and Robbie.
Yeah.
Victoria, I'll help you with the wording when I'm here Wednesday.
Oh, thank, thank you.
Uh, I guess if there's no other questions, uh, we call Calrope, please.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Hi.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Gil McCallum.
Yes.
Robert Carr.
Yes.
Greg Dibbitt.
Yes.
Twelve, four, one pass, motion carries. All right, number fifteen, consider approval for resolution number twenty, I'm sorry, folks, I had this thing turned off, I thought. I'll see if that does. Number fifteen, consider approval for resolution number twenty twenty-three, dash twelve, eleven, dash oh two, for the school to borrow fourteen million dollars for their building, building repairs and renovations, approved by the Education Committee and the Budget Committee. Uh, the bond is currently been repaired by, uh, can I read this, actually, Michaelology, they're the ones that have been, that knows our bonding for us, and, so, everything is, is in place, it's working, and so, uh, the school is gonna try and do some improvements at Richmond and the high school, and, uh, throughout the county school system, I understand, so.
So, does the school need the support of education?
Yes, support of education, we'll improve, uh, which ones they're gonna work on, if you, I think a few months ago, they sent over a list, saying they were gonna work on the tenure packet, I think, uh, what schools they're gonna do what with, uh, Ricky, I see you back there, you're gonna elaborate kinda on what they're gonna use all the money for, I think they're gonna build some rooms at Richmond.
Hillham and Allen.
Okay.
And improvements to some of the, they sent a list around to all the transporters, and the needs they needed.
Yeah, they did, we knocked, uh.
So, you have Richmond, Hillham, Allen.
And what's gonna be up?
The high school, they're gonna put in a new kitchen, I think, what they're.
They're gonna expand on the kitchen.
Yeah, expand on it.
They're gonna put a new roof on all of them, I think.
We've got all long, we've got all long roofs on.
All right, so everybody, I understand, the school approved. Got a motion by Cindy Robbins, seconded by Philip Tally, no other discussion, Victoria Calrope, please.
Greg Dibbitt.
Yes.
Donovan Clark.
Yes.
Gil McCallum.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes. Thirteen, all four, motion carries. Number sixteen, I consider approval of county budget amendments, General Fund one oh one, number one, correct. Uh, has anybody, everybody had a chance to take a look at that specific amendment, number one, uh, do you have any questions? Uh, Connie, you gotta give a brief.
Yes, um, so it's, uh, page number seventy. This is an amendment that I wrote in Brazil to the commission, and there was, um, there was one item on page seventy-nine that was not included in the calculation, so, uh, you'll see it in bold on page seventy-nine, the twenty thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars, it was, it was in the wording, and in the top half, but it wasn't in the calculation on both sides, so, if there's just a correction.
Anybody have any, I collect, got a motion there, Randall Boswell, uh, seconded by Shane Walker. Any other discussion? Victoria, Calrope, please.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jerome Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Bobby Melton.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Gil McCallum.
Yes.
Robert Carr.
Yes.
Greg Dibbitt.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes, all four, motion carries. All right, number seventeen, consider approval of General Fund one oh one, amendment number three, mileage, and we're talking about, uh, the mileage that the county executive has turned in for the emergency.
Motion to table.
Got it?
I'll say.
Motion to table, we're gonna send it back to the committees.
Here's, we do a discussion, uh, my convention is that we have vehicles available, and, uh, for the policy, we got vehicles available, county, that expression, be obligated for, for, uh, funding, unless, unless it's under the same circumstances, probably needs to be pre-approved, but I'd just like to, when anybody that's due, due money on this, that, on anything, to pay what's due, due to them, but, uh, we've, uh, just sent back to the policy, Saturday, we, uh, better look at it, see if the vehicles were on those dates, and then, I've got kind of, I finally got a copy of mileage, and, uh, there was some inconsistencies, uh, on it, it probably just needs reviewed, and, uh, I, I got a copy of what the school board does, the, the copy of their mileage, and they've got a set amount of mileage on there, and they've probably already adopted something like that, where there's no, no confusion on anything like that, so, I'd like to make a, uh, a motion, plus, we need that Durango fixed.
Yeah, we, we've been harping for six months alone, we're gonna get that Durango fixed, it needs to really be fixed.
The other one works.
Well, yeah, it's, it doesn't work, and, uh, that, uh, you know, that, we went and took it, uh, and Executive Barlow, and having their open, it's sick, it's, it's got a sensor out in it, and, uh, they're running, uh, I thought it was gonna have fixed, but it's a, a full transmission on it, which could be quite expensive, but we need, bottom line is, we need a fleet for our employees to be able to go out here and, and pay vehicles, and this is, I've done this, and Randall, I've done this for a while, this is the first time we've ever ran into this, as far as this, this type of mileage, and on, on the mileage that they're asking, we pay for them, that, that happens more than fixed vehicles two times over, probably.
Uh, here, here, right, here.
So, our policy would have, yes, okay, so, we, we, we discussed that, and that's fine, we'll come back and discuss this here, but here's, here's why, and the price of vehicles today is different than those times. Uh, five long shot, number two, that Durango's got a hundred ninety miles a mile on it, how many is twelve miles a gallon? That's a red check. Well, if we can pay mileage for somebody, it's like, highly, never takes care of shit as well, if we can pay mileage for the person responsible for their vehicle, make sure it's back in the plane, it's better than, uh, and I think, we do, if you're right, let's put, let's put, um, hands in favor, and find out what the best is for the county. The reason that we asked him, he said that we, that we wanted his mileage, is because the Durango wasn't it, he had business, he did it, it's, you want others to be doing this, if I take my business, little personal gift, and use it, I want you to do it, and I would do you forward, is a different thing, but I think we need a good person for it, so, what he did, is he had to do it.
Well, here's the problem I got with that, I withdrew the mileage that Mr. Barlow gave us. If I get made, we got charged to go to a graduation. That, that's not county business. That's not county business.
Oh, I, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't know people liked, well, kick it back to policy.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Yeah, kick it back to policy, to, to, to policy.
Every one of us is on call, I said this in that late, and every one of us is on call, twenty-four seven, many, many nights, I rolled out of bed, went to that nursing home, and I would not dare ask the county to help pay my gas mileage, that's our job, that's what we do when we run for this job, that's our job.
I understand, but his job, where it was, it's not, seeing, we gotta, we gotta separate the two, do we not want to pay, because it's Mr. Steve Barlow, we didn't want to pay, because this is the right thing to do, we gotta separate the two, um, let's go, if, if, when we go to that piece of policy, let's, let's look through it, and then, your names or anything else, let's see what a vehicle's gonna cost us?
Yeah.
That vehicle's what, twelve years old, fifteen years old? Let's find out if we buy a forty thousand dollar vehicle, plus insurance, plus gas, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, versus paying, I think, whether it's sixty-two, sixty-five, fifty, makes sense, a model.
Well, let's see what's best for the county.
Well, uh, uh, what, what he's asking, girl, here is forty-five hundred and fifteen dollars, to fix that vehicle is what, three thousand, is what you said?
No, we've, can I speak? Can I, can I speak? Because here's what, we, Lily Ann, uh, give her personal opinion, last fall, I told you guys that that Durango was messing up, and I have been accused of being a liar ever since, until about a month ago, whenever it tore up on somebody else, um, I can't fit in that little tiny car, I'm a big old guy, and I'm sorry, I can't do it, uh, it tore up on Randall and I, whenever we were in Hanging Limb last fall, uh, like Patrick's saying, if it was Connie having to drive and do county business, you would pay her in a heartbeat, without any questions asked, and just because it's me standing here saying, listen, I had to drive my car, and I mean, it was brought up that the nursing home has two vans, and the senior center has vehicles I could've took, well, the ambulance service has veh, uh, ambulances too, that the county owns, and the sheriff's department has cars, I mean, I can get to my meetings a lot quicker if I drove those, but it wasn't dedicated to me, and you gotta look, I've got a lot of business to do, and I travel a lot. It's point blank, I mean, the question was asked to me, well, just how much do you drive? Right there's the proof, and the graduation is because I was asked to be on the stage and represent the county. I mean, that's what you wanna pull out, out of all of that? Everything was legit, because we ran it to the point. All I'm asking, hang on, I'm talking, hang on just a second, please, and I do not wanna be disrespectful, but hang on just a second. We have fought this for a year, and the reason why it's forty-five hundred dollars is because I went back to January first, I didn't go back to when I started, because I did drive the Durango up until it started messing up, I've had, uh, my maintenance man looked at it, and he said it, the Durango's transmission's gotta be pulled, that's more than what he can do, he's went to every shop in over in the county, and every one of them's refused to work on it. The auto works. They refuse to work on it, auto work says that he had done so much work on that, uh, Durango, that he will not touch it again, his advice was to sell it the way it is.
Well, we've got it in here, one of the things where they've, uh, said to sell it, so, why we, uh.
I, I don't know, I don't, it, it's been sitting still for so long, because it's been a fight to pay me mileage, it was passed by two committees to pay me mileage, and now that it comes to the point to where it's the end of the year, we've got, we've got Lily Ann that wrote a letter of support, and the reason why I'm do, what, I'm not asking, And the reason why I'm do, what, I'm not asking, I'm not trying to cheat the county. I'm not trying to add to my salary. I begged you guys to buy me a car and yuns refused to do it. Back in the fall of last year. I said the Durango, hang on, I said the Durango is messed up and yuns said, no. Okay. Uh, Miss Lily Ann, will you please give your judgment on this?
Well.
I would like for the citizens to hear it as well and everybody that's watching.
Go ahead, lock your lid. I've got it right here.
What I wrote?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I can't remember what I wrote.
You, you own the special five, the Durango was the special five in that.
It's my understanding, county, county's written travel reimbursement policy currently provides something to be effect that, quote, county employees will use the county vehicle, so Durango, for county business. But if that vehicle is being used by others or it's disabled, then the county employee will be paid mileage for the use of their personal vehicle. That was my understanding of what the policy was. It's my understanding the Durango is disabled and has been for some unknown time. Thus indeed is certainly reasonable and legal to reimburse Mr. Barlow, the county mayor, for his travel for county business back to January two thousand three, hoping this helps. I'm in the office tomorrow, so just let me know if you have questions. So, I had the question of, you know, that, I was told that was the policy of, of the county commission and the, uh, the committee that oversees the mileage. And I assume that's all been passed and in writing somewhere. Who is the chairperson of, of the policy and salary committee? Who? Oh, okay, Donna. So you all have a written policy, right?
We have a policy that says that if, if we do not have a vehicle available, then we will pay mileage. But there was veh, a vehicle available. Now, it was the car, which Judge Colson gets in that car, so I don't understand why Mr. Barlow can't get in that car. But that's what our policy says.
Okay. Can I speak as a citizen, please? Oh, can I speak as a county clerk? It never was, it never was a problem. I have witnesses that Mr. Barlow, or Mr. Danner, when he was in office, it was seen at his house on numerous occasions on Sunday when I left church, but that wasn't a problem. I think no choose is personal.
I don't understand why that is so personal. I mean, I, I haven't done anything to you guys.
We need to pay for what's due to you. My, my, my recommendations is to send it back to the committee. Let them review it, go through it, uh, with some discrepancies on some mileages that just stood way, way out. They have like close five hundred miles on one. And then you got this general riding around the county looking at things.
I was with a representative and he wanted to see the county. And I took him to see the county. I took, attracted, and I done everything legit. Everything is legal. I don't, trying to take advantage.
I'm not saying, I'm saying if we open this can of worms up, we got, what, how many employees we got can buy it? Hundred plus? Two, two, okay, we do that, anybody can, I, I can go, me and Phil can go back and start tagging mileage. Back today, we were out at Hardee, Hardee's Chapel on our, on our own time looking at stuff. We could go back to a year. You're talking about fixing to open up a big can. We're gonna have to get a fleet. And, and that's the bottom line. I, I'm not got a problem with paying Detective Barlow, do what he's doing. But it needs to return back to the policy and salary committee. And we're gonna have to come up with a plan, and it's a good thing that he's, it's, it's hit like this. It's, it's a good thing that it come up like this, so, cause we never have been hit with this. And, and you're not, you don't know how tight your policies are or where you got holes in it till you're tested on them. But it needs to, and, and it needs to be more accessible for everybody. But my contention is, we do need a fleet. Because if we start paying mileage for everybody in county life, we're cashing a check that we, nobody's authorized. You sit here and just, Victoria comes up here and decides to just say, ah, let's see. Back to January, here, here's a check for, that's due to me for, for five thousand dollars again. Each individual starts doing that. It, it don't need to be set in precedence. We just need something ironclad. Policy and ethics committee needs to strengthen this up, bring it back to us, pay, recommend what's due to Detective Barlow and to get this taken care of. But meanwhile, I don't care to help a bit on the policy. But we need a ironclad policy on this stuff that's applicable for everybody. And it, and like a vehicle does, like it does take a vehicle off, uh, out of the category. And it pairs up. We need a method in here that says he's allocated available, go give a rental vehicle while he's on traffic for that week to, an economy or like, or like we do. It's a, if it's a Durango, he can go rent a Durango to finish that week up and be able to drive that thing back. They're, they're just little stuff like that. We don't have any policies. And it's a good thing it's brought up like this. It, it, we're, we're trying to be contentious about it. That there's some discrepancies on this stuff that needs reviewing. That's, that's, that's why we're on it.
I think what you're saying is that, you know, that it needs to apply to all employees.
Yeah, it has, it has to apply to all employees. It's not, it's not enough.
It needs to be a time limit. I mean, if you didn't have, it needs to be reimbursed. It needs to come in on a monthly basis and not, and, you know, whoever it is that's asking for reimbursement.
But it's a government policy. But he's, he's, he's been on this thing for, for months now. And because of government, because of committee, and because of time, here we go.
Well, uh, if we do it on a monthly basis, we have time to, oh, whoever needs to look at it, look at it and ask the question, what was the graduation, Stephen? I was asked to go. Okay, that's fine. But when if we get a whole year's work, it's hard to manage that and ask questions. So I think in our policy, we need to say, we need to have a time limit. It needs, needs to be turned in within so many days and give us time to look at it.
This is these guys here, but it probably needs to be free approved. And you can do that. I'm going on training. I've been over, I worked for the federal government thirty-five years. Before I've done anything, I asked to make my mileage. I put my mileage down, it's gonna be two hundred miles. It's already approved and it's going through the committees and it's been approved by us and we're the approving body. And it's already approved and there's no questions about it. But it's the way it is.
So, I got a question. Uh, sorry, Ren.
Go to mouth it out there. All you gotta do is, if he's got to go with the governor, is wherever he's got to go, this address, that address. The mileage, it's much cheaper, pay mileage if it don't be.
That will not.
Don't believe that. Yes, the ones been nine-one-one. Pay trip mileage nine-one-one and it's a lot, it's a lot cheaper than we had to do.
And it's from county out just to wherever. It's not from home. No other place.
From this building here to wherever he has to go, no comeback. All you gotta do, right, telephone.
I got another thing, trying to be respectful. So, when I put from home, it's because I left either on the weekend to get where I was going or four AM in the morning to get where I was going. When I put from home, it's because my office was closed. And I left from that place to get to where I was going. If my office was open and I left from my office, it says Livingston. Now, that is legal and that is in the papers of the travel policy of the state of Tennessee. I had done nothing wrong, but I have been asking and begging every single month. Month after month after month. You wanna know why it's a year long? It's because we have dragged this out for twelve months. I have. I have been asking. It has been reviewed by the Ethics and Policy Committee and passed by the Ethics and Policy Committee. It has been passed by the Budget Committee. And now when it comes to court, we're wanting to table it again. How much longer are we gonna do this?
Now that you brought the Budget Committee up, I was there the other night. And for years, Billy Fitz has been on this board for years. Always wanted to do our patent and it was always a conflict of interest. We never could give him that. The other night you voted for yourself to get mileage.
Everybody voted yes, but Greg. It passed through budget. I didn't even have a vote.
All right, we, we talked about this enough. Uh, we know where everybody stands. So we have a motion on the floor to table it and send it back to the policy committee for review and get it correct where it applies to the entire workforce. Uh, motion, and a second by Donna.
Just to make sure, what are we voting on here?
We're gonna vote yes to not do it, or how, you need to do, how we need to do it. Just vote, uh, to not give a value to be a yes and no to allow it.
Well, I, I got a motion on the table to.
Yeah, you do.
To, uh.
Table.
Table, and send it back to the committee and then throw it back to us. So there's a, so a lot of mileage to, like, table on this.
So the vote is to table or not to table?
Exactly.
It's a table, send it back to the policy committee for review. That's what we're voting.
Oh. We vote yes and we want to table.
Really, just, it needs to come back to the policy, but this is just review is, we need to make sure. And if those dates of the vehicle's available or not, and, and, uh, my, my condition is, I, I've got a, on a court, I can get in that. It's, it's, uh, it may not be comfortable. But if we have a vehicle available, that's decided. But the policy is from, from salary committee or the policy and ethics committee. And the, make the recommendations, bring it back to us. That's my motion.
Could you go over it one more time? How we vote?
Yeah, we vote yes to table it and leave it to the committee for review or change to get it in compliance. And no to go ahead and pay the mileage tonight. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay, can we clarify? It's not just mileage for Mr. Steve, it's mileage in general.
Mileage is good, that's the rest.
All right.
Any other question? If not, the jury please follow that.
Greg Nivens?
Yes, I have a question.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAlwin? Yes. Cindy Robbins? Yes. Donna Savage? Yes. Shane Walker? Robbie Melton? Yes. Jeff Long? Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
No.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker? No. Buster Carr?
No.
Randall Boswell?
No.
Five no's and, I mean, thirteen, five, or?
Eight.
Eight. Motion carries.
There's gotta be two thirds on that.
Uh, all these top tableists, though. All right, number, uh, number eighteen. Consider approval, jump up amendment number four. Uh, everybody has a chance to look down the floor.
Anybody with it?
Any one? Motion. Motion by Randall, follow. Donna, what do you think about that? It's just simple amendments, what it is. Uh, any one, uh, that you're giving, if you like.
Okay, so amendment number four, uh, what you'll see on the very first line is, uh, the majority of this is a hundred and nine thousand. And what that is, at the time when we passed the budget, we were not sure if the funds from the, for the SROs could be used for vehicles. And later, we later found out, yes, it could. So that's why you see that amendment in there. And so, there's probably why Geraldine was a little confused on the front. But that's, that's not only that. Then we had, um, insurance planning on the vehicle. And we wanted to, Colson said that to fix, uh, to equip the new vehicles that were getting to the sheriff's department. And then we have overtime, uh, the jail overtime, they've had a lot of, um, people out, so they've had to fill in. And so what we've done is used the funds from, um, the overtime, um, to cover those employees. From the jail side, like, from the guards, because whatever category of employees is out, cause what we're discussing with. So, that's why we see that amendment in there. And, do y'all have any other questions about that?
Gabrielle Shannon, amendment number four. Any questions?
I'll say it.
Second by Robbie Melton. Burger Call Road.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Doug Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker? Philip Tally?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage? Yes. Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Gil McAlwin? Yes. Buster Carr?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
For all four, motion carries. Number nineteen, consider approval of American Rescue Plan Fund, one twenty-seven amendment number one. And it's called Open Meeting Program. So, say what you'd like to tell us about this Open Meeting Program.
Absolutely. Um, we received a discount on this at twenty-five percent. We have to commit before, uh, December the thirty-first. Uh, so on this open meetings, it's, it will go to electronic, uh, uh, court system where it automatically takes notes. It, uh, you'll have a tablet. Uh, when you get, get here, it takes the roll for you. Uh, it's very simple. You push a button, says you're here. Uh, also, when you go to vote, uh, there'll be screens on the wall that shows the public, uh, what everybody's doing. It'll also have the agenda up there as of what you're voting on. It'll have it written out so the public knows, uh, what we are voting on, uh, the description of, of it. Uh, and then up there, it'll have your name. And then when you cast your vote, there'll be three, uh, colors there and it'll say yes, no, or pass. So, when you're casting your vote, it, it will say voting. Uh, and then when you do cast your vote, it'll say voted. So, it will not reveal how anybody votes until the last person puts their vote in. And then it'll pop up on the screen, who voted, uh, yes, who voted no, who made the motion and who seconded it. It automatically records it and it passes or fails. Uh, so in this system, it's supported. Uh, we've got it, uh, in here for five years. Uh, and then after that, it's like three thousand dollars a year. Uh, but they support it on the IT side and it's the whole program. And like I said, it writes the notes for the county clerk. It keeps up with, uh, uh, what you voted on. And then also, it has a thing in there for when the public wants to speak. It has a thing in there to where we were at a minute ago where everybody wanted to have part of the conversation. So you push speak in there on this thing and it puts you in line. And when it's your time to speak, it'll say, uh, like, this, for instance, Jesse Bowman, it's time to speak. So Jesse will have, uh, time to speak there. And it, it just kinda puts everything in order. Um, the, uh, it'll have a countdown for when it's time for the publics to speak. It'll have a three minute, uh, on the clock and it'll count down from there. And at thirty seconds, it'll give you a thirty second warning. It says you'll have thirty seconds left. Uh, but the public, it's for the public and for us as well, so the public can see. Uh, like this agenda, when they're sitting back here in the back and you're saying resolution two zero two-three dash one two one one oh three. Uh, being in the public, you're like, what in the world, what is that? So it'll have it up there on the screen so they can see it as well as we can see it. Uh, it, it's just moving forward. Uh, all the counties are starting to go to it. Uh, Ben Rogers, uh, kinda introduced it to me. Um, they have this system as well. Uh, I have a video of it. I, I showed it to the Budget Committee. I tried to cast it up on the wall, but it didn't have the sound, so I had to turn my computer around and unhook for it, so you can see it. Uh, and I have it now on my, uh, phone. If anybody wants to see it before you vote, I can pull it up and everybody can watch it. Uh, but it's a real neat system. Uh, and like I said, it, it's just coming along so we're, uh, Victoria won't have to individually call everybody's name out. You automatically vote on your own. Uh, keeps things rolling and keep things in perspective. It's, it's twenty thousand and we're in, uh, we have ARP funds to cover that. It, it didn't have anything to do with location. It's just the system. We can meet anywhere we want.
All right, what does that's for?
So it's three thousand after the first five years?
After the first five years, it becomes three thousand a year.
For ministry?
Mm-hmm. And support, cause updating of systems and things like that.
Is that, uh, that's for everything, huh?
Twenty thousand, it's for everything for the first year, yeah. For the first five years. And that's with a twenty-five percent discount. The ARP grant.
Yeah, the American Rescue Plan, uh, this works to come out of, uh, uh. Anybody got any questions?
Geraldine has one.
Oh, sorry, Geraldine.
So will it do away with this big packet that we get every month?
You can, you can still have that packet as well, but it'll be on that tablet as well too, of what we're going over. So, uh, the chairman will have a computer and he moves to the next and, and things like that. He'll get training on what comes, that pops up on your tablet. Uh, the, uh, Victoria will also have a computer and it will generate her minutes for her as we go on. And then of course she adds what questions or things that were said on the side. Oh, you'll still have a, a agenda. Yes, you'll, you'll still have an agenda.
You make that a budget. Go ahead.
After, after five years, it becomes three thousand a month. That's for the support and everything. Uh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Three thousand a year after. No, 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 that's just three thousand flat feet.
First five years is free?
It's in with that twenty thousand. You put, you, you can speak at any time, cause we can all speak, but you can push a button and. But, you can push a button and speak, it puts you in line. I mean, every, anybody can speak out of turn or anything like that. It just kinda puts things in order. If, not trying to be rude or anything like that, I'm just saying, it just kinda helps move the meeting along.
Any other question? Uh, alright, if there's any other question, let her take a motion. Got a motion for a round ball. Geraldine, you seconding, seconding Geraldine Walker? Alright, Clark Colerole.
Greg Nivens?
Uh, no.
Darwin Clark? Gil McAlwin? No. Cindy Robbins? Donna Savage? No. Shane Walker? Robbie Melton? No. Jeff Long?
No.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
No.
Geraldine Walker? Yes.
Go ahead, Geraldine.
Yes. Budger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
H five, uh, public failure. H five. Alright, number twenty. Consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve eleven, tax overhaul to request unclaimed property on an annual basis. And that's a pretty good idea. They, they met with a group called Barrett. Uh, lady named, uh, Donna Barrett. Where we do some additional revenue, uh, for the county. And so, this is the starting of it, uh, uh, there's always unclaimed property somewhere, uh, in the county that we don't know about or at the state. And that's what, that's, what that's gonna be doing, is for her to look at that. Uh, we'll need a motion and second for her to approve or to go ahead and proceed with that, to look for, uh, you know, unwanted property.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, the lady that's doing this, have, when did we hire her?
Well, uh, you'll have to ask Steve, uh...
That's what, that's our, uh, tax audit that we approved and we hired. She's the one that was done her tax audit.
Well, I know we talked about that, but, I mean, I didn't know it was working for both.
We approved her months ago, and she's been working on it six months or so.
I know, we approved her a tax audit.
Um, okay, it wasn't just for this.
It run together for a while.
Oh, yes.
For so many, so long, how long is that, Connie? Of course, we, we went through this and approved this six months ago, or something.
That's right. Uh, they, uh, she was part of the tax audit, and I think it's, uh, for the first year, sixty percent. If she gets fifty, I, I hear that, I read it. If she gets fifty percent of anything, that's she buys. And then, once she gets that, uh, found, she'll get that part, and then the recurring part will be, she will be charged. They will be free to the county after that, we'll like pay her. That's how that works, so. She gets fifty percent of anything, she buys from the county.
Okay.
The first time, and then after that, we work back to the county. The money that she buys for her. Which is actually the same. Alright, I'll let her take a motion, thank you for that. Motion for a round. Anybody? Second by Cindy. Clark Colerole.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Budger Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker? Yes. Philip Tally?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy? Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton? Yes. Shane Walker? Donna Savage? Yes. Cindy Robbins? Gil McAlwin? Yes. Budger Carr?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
All four motion carries. Uh, number twenty-one. Uh, consider approval for resolution, uh, number twenty twenty-three dash twelve eleven, tax overhaul to request litigation tax to the General Sessions, uh, General Sessions Court. And it's part of the same thing that she identified, that there should be some money, you know, additional revenue. And, so a proposed increase that would help pay the salary of the court or the judge would be increased to twenty-three dollars. So, that's what, uh, the request is, that to, uh, to impose a litigation tax of twenty-three dollars for the General Sessions Court. It says here that, under T C Code sixteen fifteen five thousand oh six, you have to specify, authorize the county to levy an additional local tax, litigation tax to the General Sessions Court, for the purpose of helping them, they too fund, General Sessions judges' salaries. That's what that's for.
And the one, the ones that has to pay it is the ones that go to the justice.
That's correct, yeah. Whoever, you know, whoever commits a crime or, uh, civil, whatever. So, any question? Got a motion from Philip Tally? Second by Jeff Long? Victoria, please call her over.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAlwin? Yes. Cindy Robbins? Yes. Donna Savage? Yes. Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton? Yes. Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker? Yes. Budger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Everything, all four motion carries. Number twenty-two, uh, consider approval for resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve eleven dash oh five, to request litigation tax for the jail. And what that will do is, it's all of the same policy, and it's gonna be, we're gonna go, we're requesting to go currently thirty-five dollars, with a twenty-five dollar increase. So that would make it, that would make it sixty dollars. It would be the increase for the jail. And then bring in an additional twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, in new revenue or increase for the jail. Lord knows, he needs it.
It's for the jail or the courthouse?
Yeah. Oh, is it, so it is for the courthouse, too?
Yes.
Okay, it didn't say in these documents, I didn't know. Okay. Any questions? If I understand, this is litigation taxes for the jail and the court.
Well, they don't have to...
It'll be going up to about twenty-five dollars, so it'd be sixty dollars. And that's still cheap, 'cause when you're housing state prisoners, everybody else, you know, you don't really cover the cost, so. Got a motion by Cindy Robbins? Second by Donna Savage, so. Any other questions? Victoria Colerole?
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAlwin? Yes. Cindy Robbins? Yes. Donna Savage? Yes. Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton? Yes. Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker? Yes. Jeff Long? Sorry. Budger Carr?
Yes.
Budger Carr?
Yes.
Everything vote, all four motion carries. Number twenty-two. Consider approval for resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve eleven, dash oh five, to, to request litigation tax for the archives. I wrote that after the wrong resolution, I read the last one. Resolution number twenty twenty-three twelve eleven oh six, for the archives. And it's gonna, looks like the, it's gonna increase a, a filing document, uh, for up to five dollars. And, from what I'm reading here, it'll go to the general, it goes to the general fund, it'll be collected to the clerk's office. And it could generate up to forty thousand dollars a year, it could, I mean, it will. So, that's the purpose of that. Is there any questions or anything regarding that? If not, I'm gonna take a motion for it. Motion by Robbie Melton?
Greg and Cindy.
Got a second by Greg. Call in quick, if not, Colerole.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Patrick Carr?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker? Yes. Philip Tally?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Robbie Melton? Yes. Shane Walker?
Yes.
Donna Savage? Yes. Cindy Robbins? Yes. Gil McAlwin? Yes. Budger Carr?
Yes.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Uh, everything vote, all four motion carries. Uh, number twenty-four, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve eleven dash oh seven, to request mineral salvage tax increase, tax, I mean, which would be an increase, uh, over, currently, the, uh, the mineral salvage tax is, is fifteen cents, uh, per ton. And what the proposal is, is to move it to forty-five cents per, per ton, which would go directly to the highway department. So, that's where the rocks are, are, you know, dug out of ground. Uh, it covers fill stone, uh, uh, limestone, sandstone, uh, chert, and sandy gravel. So, uh, we get that down on a quarterly basis, and that comes to the highway department, and it's much needed, so. Uh, the forty-five... Right, right. And it should generate, if, if it's people how, which they sell, it's got the potential to go over two hundred thousand at some point, if ever give their selling. And so, anybody have any questions? Take a motion, but, but a motion for Donald, second by Jeff Long. So, Jeff Long. Alright, please call her over.
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAlwin? Yes. Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage? Yes. Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton? Yes. Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy? Yes. Philip Tally?
Yes.
Geraldine Walker? Yes. Budger Carr?
Yes.
Shane Boswell?
Yes.
Everything vote, all four motion carries. Alright, number twenty-five, is considered, consider approval for resolution twenty twenty-three, dash twelve eleven, dash oh eight, to request liquor referendum, all to go on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-four, for the people to decide. Now, that doesn't mean that, that, that you're, you're going to vote for it or not for it. That means that you're voting, you put it on the refer, on, on, on the ballot, for, for November twenty-four. And it'll be up to the residents of Northern County, whether to decide if they want liquor by the drink out in the county. Now, that's what that's about. Uh, of course, the city has it now, uh, it, you know, it could increase revenue if they vote then, uh, tax revenue for schools, and probably some other funds, general fund or something, so. Got a vote? Go ahead, Geraldine.
City don't vote then?
Pardon?
City does not allow the vote in that?
No.
They already have, uh...
I know, but they don't get to vote in that.
No.
Yeah, yeah, they don't, yeah, 'cause, yeah. Oh, I, I would...
City don't.
It'll be, it'll be in the first district, so they'll...
She told me it, but it wasn't happening.
Let's see here, what's it say?
So you're saying the first district?
That's what I asked. I told her.
Hold on. Hold on, hold on. It don't, it said right... Yeah, it'd be a capital letter, it's what it said. It says that the referendum will do, is allow the rest of that, well, marinas near the lake to compete on equal footing, with restions across the lake, in Kentucky and other places. But we don't have a, uh, a vote dock in Northern County, did we, Greg?
Not anymore.
So, uh, but yeah, that's what it would be for, and it'll be up to the people of, of our county, so. Uh, like I said, you're not voting yes or no on this, you're just voting.
Fifty-one percent has to be revenue from, uh...
Fifty-one percent, right.
Fifty, not fifty-one percent of revenue, that's...
No, I don't agree.
Right. Gotta be a deal.
Yeah, there's gotta be a set down.
In a sense, you have to have forty, you have to have forty, uh, retail units, have forty...
Alright.
If we don't have the referendum, it stays like it is now?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, it doesn't change.
But this way, the paper comes out?
That's right. And that way, that way, the, it gets out there to them, and the ones that want it, they can go vote, want to vote, likewise, so. Alright, I'm gonna take a motion, if there's any other question, I'm gonna take a motion, and a second. Got a motion by Patrick. Second by anybody? Second by Robbie Carr. Uh, Burke, will you please call her over?
Greg Nivens?
Uh, no.
Darwin Clark?
Yes.
Gil McAlwin? No. Cindy Robbins? Donna Savage? No. Shane Walker? Robbie Melton? No. Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
No.
Geraldine Walker? No. Budger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Victoria, I think you got it.
Six, yes, and seven, no.
A motion. Well, I see, seven to six, just, we can have a simple majority on that, we gotta have a simple majority, so. Either, either way, so somebody will have to change their vote, or we, we can't, uh, we just have, we'll be in a cell. Right. You gotta have a simple majority the fastest, move to the, to, for referendum. We don't have to...
Do we want to do next month, we've got two people here, how does that work?
You put that in a motion, but I don't know how that will affect this group. I don't know how quickly they're wanting to, to move it. If we not to a member of the twenty-fourth to get it on the ballot, I don't know if we have to vote for it or not. We could, uh, uh, move it to next month's calendar, or the following calendar, either way.
So you're gonna make the table at then, you're gonna make the table tonight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so what's the, you make, we can't vote, we're not clear on it, so we can't, it's not either way, so we need to make a motion to table it, move it to next month. Uh, you would have to make another motion to bring it back on the table, yeah.
So, yes, those folks wanting on the ballot?
Right.
For citizens to have choice, no is, they don't, they don't know.
It's not going to be a reference.
Okay, but now, when they get to bring it back up?
We can, or we can put it off, or, uh, next month, maybe. We can, uh, probably, uh, can we not, uh, uh, reach that, that warning, play with the next vote? With that, with that, I don't have a motion for that, does that mean, well, you did pass it?
If you pay the money, be old business, next month.
Right, yeah. Okay, well, this is move to next month's calendar, but I hear you, motion for that. Got a motion by Patrick McCurdy to, uh, table it, to move to next month's calendar. Got a second, anybody? Second, I see. Alright, so, we're gonna vote to table it to next month, is what the, the issue will be, and no, we're not gonna do that. Remember that?
If they, no, what happens right now? So this motion is...
This is a motion to table it, and then, and bring it up to the next month's meeting. Hold on, hold on, what?
If it's not, uh, the next month, is it dead forever, or will it be the next month?
No, we still bring it back up, to table it, like, we'll bring it back up, yeah, it can come back up.
Okay, so if the no, if we're most no right now?
Is a, is not gonna move it to next month's calendar, okay? Or the next month. You vote yes to move it, then, uh, we'll have it next month or the following month, depending on how busy the court is. That's the way we have to do it.
We didn't have, we didn't fail on this, we didn't have enough votes.
Yeah, we didn't have enough votes. We didn't have a simple majority vote. While we're having to do it.
So, Patrick, so you're...
You have to suspend the rules, you have to do anything else for it?
And put it on the roll with it. All right, she said.
Yeah.
Everybody understands?
Yes, they want to table it.
Yeah, do we have a motion for that? Patrick, yeah, we got a motion by Patrick.
This is just.
No second.
So let me ask the question, if, if we're both knowing, don't table it for next month, what happens?
Well, if you don't vote no on it, uh, it'll be over. If you don't table it, then tonight, if I'm voting.
So it dies, right?
It dies, yeah, it dies in open court here.
Yeah, if you never take it off the table, it dies.
Yeah. So we have a motion, no second.
Cindy second.
No, she didn't, she didn't.
She rescinded it?
She did the first time.
Oh, she did, she did vote for the table.
All right, so, uh, we're at a, uh, impasse, so, uh, the only thing I know to do is, uh.
So nobody's seconded it?
Nobody's seconded it, so we don't have a, that fails too, so we don't have.
But you seconded it.
Randall seconded, okay, we gotta second the original. All right. Now, go guess to table it, no to not table it, all right? Yes to table, no to not table. If, if not, if you vote no, majority that wins, then it's done, it's over.
So this is not to bring it back next month, it's just to table it?
If, if it doesn't get tabled, that's what I'm saying, if you don't table it, it will come back, if you vote no on it, and that's majority, it doesn't come back, uh, it don't get tabled, so it's over, if it's done, it's, it dies here. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Does everybody understand what I'm saying, if it's not?
That was my question, but we can, we, so we can bring it up for, if we run that to that.
Not once it's, well, if it's done, done, you table it, so.
If not, once it's done.
It stays here.
So, so, I mean, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a plea, but I, I'm kind of real, is we at least to be to have the option of being able to vote on it, it, uh, I mean, this, you said, you took your constituents, decided you want to vote, so this is exactly what this will do. It's to the constituents to vote on it.
You voted on it, she, that's it, you voted on it.
I understand, but what I'm saying, that we, that, we gotta be very careful, that we don't actually do this thing if we really want the citizens to have a voice, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, all right, so.
I'd like to say something.
Go there.
Yeah. I guess it doesn't happen. As far as, even if, I wouldn't care if I was never another beer or liquor or anything, but if I won, I won during the lift, if I have to drive the thirty mile to get, I'm going to get, and I'm gonna be driving back home again. And wherever other county I go to is gonna get the revenue. Just Carter, I'm making that, it's revenue for the county, that's the only reason that I vote for the citizens, they put on the ballot. My use, I have no use for them, uh, for life on anybody.
Right.
So, I think it's a choice the citizens should make, because it's, they're, those ones were taxed.
Yeah.
And it would take, it, it would bring in revenue to the county that we could have with our property tax.
So, you know, I don't know, I'm like, the city's got all, what they're doing, but I'm sure it could, so.
Uh, there's an extra, there's, I, I, there's, there's about twenty, twenty-one percent tax on your property.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, the motion, what we have on the floor is, uh, uh, got a motion to table it, and second, if you vote yes to table it or no not to, and if you vote no, and it doesn't, and that, and no is the majority, then it's dead right here, it doesn't want a referendum, it'll come back up, okay, everybody understand? If you vote yes, table, no, it killed it. If that's the majority, everybody, you understand? Tom, everybody good? All right, Burke, call her up.
Greg Nevin?
Yeah.
Carter Carr?
Yes, table it.
Bill McCowen? No. Cindy Robbins?
I think what the people has to say, like.
I believe it, it's gonna take two thirds to get back off table.
Yeah.
Donna Savage? No. Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Mountain?
No.
Jeff Wong?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
No.
Jerome Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
No.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to eight.
Yes, all right, let's move to table it and, and bring it back up, uh, at the next program time, or the next four days, we'll get it, make it work out. All right, number twenty, what slot we have, number twenty-six, uh, consider approval to allow the county mayor to join with the city mayor and submit a letter of intent to conduct a special census for Livingston and Oakton County and proceed with the identifying cost associated with it approved by the budget. Now, I think what I understand, what I read is that, that we're hoping to do another, that special census, and we feel, I feel like we didn't get it right the first time, and that, uh, we have an opportunity to get, get up to twenty-three thousand, if we get twenty-three thousand, which means we can get more state money, more federal money, highway park, get more gas tax money, and so forth, so, uh, you know, I, I, I think it's a good idea to do it, that if the city goes in with us, they'll pay half, it could be even worth eleven thousand dollars on us for the cost, uh, they didn't give a exact number, but, uh, if we, we, we do this, I really believe that even if the city don't sign on, we're really considerate, because I don't think we're too far off on our numbers, three hundred votes will probably get us right in, or vote for three hundred people will get us in to, uh, the next bracket, which will make more money for us. Question?
Did she tell us the other night how much money that was gonna bring in potentially?
Uh, a hundred and seventy dollars per person for the city, five hundred dollars per person in the county, is what it's gonna say.
So, and that's also going to?
Oh, she, the U S N says make five hundred, five hundred person increase in Oakton County, so it don't, it don't say, I guess that, is that one seventy applies to us too, okay, one seventy or five hundred for the revenue, but I don't know.
The reason I'm asking is because, um, when we, when we move up into that other bracket, and this is not the personal, but Stephen, Victoria, all them gets a raise, right?
Yep.
So that's gonna be money that comes out of whatever we get.
Right.
And revenue you get will be a whole lot more.
Yeah, a lot more.
You're talking maybe four, five, ten dollars?
Yeah.
I heard their salary goes up by eight thousand. Is it in there?
No, we don't vote that.
Potential additional eight, five thousand per year, then?
Yeah. No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't look that much, it's just a small percentage, it's what it would be.
Does she get half of that, the lady that did this, does she get half of that, fifty percent?
We're gonna pay the company to do a director for us.
I'm saying the money that we bring in at the start of this meeting, it was told that she gets fifty percent.
That was the, uh.
The litigation tax, I think that's the difference.
Nothing to do with this.
No, this is something different, this is totally different. This here is just, to see if we've got enough people out there to put us to the maximum.
Right.
I don't think she had anything to do with that, I didn't read anything in there, she's saying that this is something that we've been looking at for a while. And I'm sure Stephen would have caught that.
She's the one that.
She's the one who.
Or that's why I'm. Right, hers is, um, I mean, that census will determine what happens with that.
Now, was she gonna come up back with a figure to tell us what a census would cost, the city and the county?
Yes, yes, she will. No, but she said the range was between twenty-eight thousand to twenty-five thousand. I don't know, but depending on the size of the cities, I don't know, somebody that's, why, but there was such a variance, but, um, you know, if you had a standard twenty-five, we'd have to come back, and she gave very many sort of good numbers, and looked at the state for revenue and all that, it's a whole lot, a whole lot of revenue for, for.
Well, she stated due to COVID, that the number, that she felt like the numbers was all wrong, and that we was probably higher.
She not say that she would come back with a figure if we passed it?
Yes, if y'all decided it, she'll be your cause, and you guys will approve that as well.
Mayor Robinson, just have, Mayor.
No, she was going to talk to him, this was, this right here is just giving me permission to work with him, that's all it was about.
But that wasn't perfect, though.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Robbie Mountain?
I'll second.
Second by Donna Savage. Any other questions? All right, Victoria, call her up, oh, yeah, we can do a vote, so, um, all four?
Yeah.
Uh.
Any vote, motion carries, all four carries. All right, twenty-seven.
Shannon's not here, her daughter was running a hundred and five temperature, so I told her to stay home with her baby.
All right. Number twenty-eight, any comments from the general public, uh, this afternoon, any comments will be, have to hear toward the, what's on the agenda. Any other questions?
I wonder, back to Stephen's idea about putting that stuff on the board? I think that'd be a good idea, I mean.
I'm here to tell you, tell us who you are.
Oh, sorry.
I can't see you, you're back there.
All right, sorry.
Sorry. Tell me you are.
Michael Walker.
Hey, Michael, good to see you.
And, or I'm Jolene, my mom.
I see who you are.
Back to Stephen's idea about putting stuff on the board?
Yeah.
For us, I know that citizens, we can come get that package, but for people that work public jobs, that don't have time to get up here by the time it closes, uh, to me, it'd be a good idea to have it up there, I can see, just you say resolution one, two, three, diktor seven, I have no idea what you're talking about, and like you said, the last meeting, I had no idea. What information happened, and of course, act of orders, I asked, I tell you, what's that resolution, where y'all get that from? All comes from that package, what happens?
All that comes from committee.
Do we have to get it from the board?
Before that goes.
So, yeah, that's, I mean, that idea you had, it's a good idea, I mean, I know it's a good thing, personally, as a citizen, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, just getting up. All right, anyone else have a comment, no? If not, uh, appreciate y'all being here, and the next meeting will be, uh, January the eighth, twenty twenty-three, at five o'clock at the county court, I mean, the motions of the chairman.
And we'll, uh, so, I don't know, eleven, twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, five?
Yeah, because if the county commission doesn't vote on that, or at all kind of direct control, uh, that's all directed down by the nurse conference. Yeah, it's just a mistake. Yeah, it's just a mistake being on there. The only thing that the county commission would oversee is the nursing home is not making a profit, going into receivership, then it would be up to the county to get up, take it, but this here is just monthly reports, monthly, uh, activities, because you don't license, license.
The committee.
The committee, the board committee.
How much help was in there, we really just look at, whether they fired or not?
Well, again, it's not a part, the financial part is not a part of the county budget, it's an independent budget, that, that's the reason why it's, uh, there. We, it's governed by that committee, that board and the committee, but, I mean, I'm not trying to give weak change, I'm just being honest, that's how it works. It's the way it is. Right.
Well, we can't give the volunteer body part, but barely enough money to make their bills, and their bills are too small, and there's nothing for committee, it wasn't in there. Fire trucks they got probably didn't run it.
Right. Well, we can do all we can, but five o'clock, we give them a little money, pay their insurance, try to help them with whatever they can, so. Any other questions? Anything? Any type of motion?
The chairman.
Got a motion around, second by Phil Tavitt, all four? The chairman, thank y'all, good night. They're actually. The commission.
Tyler, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna.